Welcome to Town Council, August 3rd to order for the normal self meditation and school to the flight. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first on our agenda tonight is the introduction of recently hired tax assessor senior clerk Lucas Jencarella.
Thank you very much. We're very honored tonight to welcome Lucas Jencarella as our new tax assessor senior clerk. Lucas is a town resident, lifelong town resident from, lives on Asher, Webu, Brifid. We had 26 people apply for the position and we had two rounds of interviews. And although others might have had some more sense of experience in the area of tax assessors, we felt that he was a good fit for the position. He's a graduate of Charahoe High School in June of 2011 and he's currently just finishing up his bachelor's degree in business management at Liberty University. His past employment, he's worked for the Arcadia of YMCA over there in Wyoming, for 138. And he worked in the after-school program. He's also been a part-time employee for the Hopington Recreation Department for the last five years as a camp counselor. And we spoke with Mary Sawyer, Director of Recreation, and she highly recommended him for the position. She thought he was very dependable and had a very high level of interpersonal skills. And when we interviewed him, we saw that, we thought he was the best fit for the position. So, we welcome him as the new tax assessor and tax assessor clerk. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, absolutely. Good evening, everyone. As Mr. McGarry said, my name's Lucas Jencarella. I'm a lifelong resident of Hopington and soon to be graduate of Liberty University. And so, when I knew I was going to be coming up here and speaking to, I knew I wanted to communicate my thankfulness that I'm feeling for being given this position. You know, like Mr. McGarry said, I've been working for the Hopington Recreation Department for six years now. And when I saw an opportunity to move up in responsibilities and take on a higher position to serve the residents of Hopington, I jumped on it. So, I'm glad to be here to work with and for the council and to work with Christine, who's been very patient with me this first week. And I'm just very thankful for this opportunity and glad to be here tonight.
Just welcome board, and I hope you stay as long as you can.
Yeah, it was a great first week. I'm looking forward to more to come.
Well, people are, still don't know that Judy's not there, so you're gonna have to deal with that.
Yeah, I've gotten about 15 calls since we got some retreats.
Where's Judy?
Yeah, but like I said, I'm glad to be here.
I'm glad you are.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, and it's so nice to have you too, which is great. You're both kind, you're older and younger, and so it's nice to have so many faces too.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Approve Town Council meeting minutes of July 20th, 2015. Set November 2nd, 2015 as a hearing date for removals of liquor licenses and vicumary licenses. Approve abatement submitted by the tax assessor. Approve refunds submitted by the tax collector. When is that? Anything to be pulled by?
Yeah, let's pull, July 20th, for a moment.
What page did?
Page four, the figure down here.
It's wrong.
It's wrong.
I think it's 130, 113.
Yeah, 113, 715, shall we, I have 13.
On the CPG.
Third line to the bottom.
It's 13,000.
No, motion to approve with the actions.
I'll second.
Almost there. Aye. First public forum, anyone else think we should be heard? Mr. Cook?
My name is Lloyd Cook and I live on the bridge at Alton Road. I addressed the council last month in regards to those chatter strips. I was assured within a few days by two sources that maybe one week, two weeks possibly, they would be gone. Except with the center strips, they would be fine, and I said that would be fine. Now I understand you got a letter from the DOT, it's gonna be maybe mid-October or so before they can do it. They came down in the middle of the night with no public hearing or anything. Tell them to get their butts down here in the middle of the night and take them out. I don't see why the people on that road have to put up with that for another two and a half months. It's really not right.
Yeah, I kinda worked behind the scenes on this for you. I dealt with the state DOT engineers and they did put out a schedule statewide that, and we're slated, believe it or not, I think Bill, if I'm correct, for one of the first week in October. So, you know, what I was saying was-
I would say it was great, they put the whole things in one night. I don't know why they couldn't come down some later and take them out. I mean, I got a backhoe, I can help them, I'll dig up the section of mine. Go in front of the house if it's any help at all.
The only thing I can think of is that there were so many that have to be redone statewide that-
Well, they shouldn't have done them in the beginning, they wouldn't have-
Absolutely agree with you, but-
You know, Chelmsford, they had a public hearing and they didn't want them, they didn't get them. I woke up in the middle, I heard this scrape and I thought there was an accident down there. Here they were, they were all in.
Yeah, they didn't give us a chance to get them.
I do appreciate what the council has done on it, but I think you should push it up a little more. There's no reason they can't come down and take them out as quick as they put them in.
Well, I'll contact the folks that set this schedule and I'll see if we can accelerate it.
Well, I thank you too for your effort, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Cook, no problem. Okay, anyone else? Town manager report, go on there.
Thank you. Palmer Circle, on July 20th, Jim Lanfair, Tim Teft and myself met with Bruce Hagaman, professional engineer, and Roger Briggs of Crossman Engineering. And we reviewed and discussed the survey work conducted on the north branch of Palmer Circle in preparation for the installation of two box culverts and the upcoming reclamation and paving of the roadway. On July 23rd, I met with Town Council President Glendolphie and a town resident to discuss the provisions of easement on property that butts cover on Palmer Circle. And we also met with another property owner who's landed butts Palmer Circle on July 30th. Same thing with respect to the provisions of the easement. The meets and boughs have been identified and drafted by the engineer of Crossman Engineering, Bruce Hagaman, and they've since been, last week they were submitted up to the solicitor's office for her review for preparation of the easement documents. Employee performance evaluations during the month of July under the town's performance evaluation management system policy. All department heads, supervisors and I conducted annual performance evaluations to measure the work performance of all town, full-time and permanent part-time employees. After completing the written evaluation reports, all radis met with the respective employees, discussed the evaluations and they're in the process of being tabulated now. And this is the second year for the town-wide performance evaluations. Lastly, on July 29th, at our request, the council president Franklin Doffe and I met with Brad Dean Jr. and Sr. They're the new owners of Dean Warehouse Services located on Chase Hill Road, the former Garrity complex. And we welcomed them into town and took a tour of their newly purchased plant, which is used for the storage of goods. They also have storage locations in Cumberland and Wallack with approximately 75 full-time employees statewide.
Okay, thanks. Any questions?
Couple things, if you don't go. Bill, how many employees are gonna be down here at the Old Garrity complex? Do they give you an idea?
I don't know. Can't fill out the conversation, it was just an meet and greet kind of thing.
Okay. Do we know what kind of goods are only stored there?
Well, one thing we did learn, there are not any hazardous materials. Because we specifically addressed that.
It's not just cable materials, you know, just retail store materials, the retailers. They're a wholesaler, no wholesaler, a logistics company. So they bring in, the goods that come off the boats, they take them from there and they'll either bring them to their sites, the warehouses, and store them there for a fee or they'll right away truck them to the locations, like a CVS, needs whatever. You know, it's all, I think I recorded. Now I feel like hard materials, I think it would be classified-
Like bulk storage?
Yeah.
Well, it's not hazardous, is it?
Yeah.
I'm real glad to see the campus finally being used.
Yeah.
Are they renting or did they purchase it?
They bought it.
They purchased it July 1st.
Wow, that's good.
They've been in business since 1988.
Yeah, they're top notch outfit.
I have a question, on employee performance evaluations. Now that you've done it for two years, do you find that it's useful? Do you find that you'll be changing some things on the evaluation, now that you've had two years to do it?
Well, we haven't had an opportunity to review the second year yet, it's still being tabulated. But, you know, we've changed it. We started with the first year and then we changed it for the second year so that it would flow a lot more smoothly. And then we recently made some more changes so that next year we're gonna do the entire process electronically with the drop-down boxes so that there's no paperwork involved and everybody's gonna sign off on it electronically. And I can thank my secretary for that, she really did a nice job. But from here on in, we'll be able to eliminate the paperwork and just do the entire process electronically.
Okay, and you've been changing the process? You've been changing the questions or the issues as you decide, as you discover certain things work better than others?
We haven't, we have not really been changing the policy. The policy is very standard and works very well. What we're changing is the procedures in order to get the documents from point A to point B.
All right, any other thoughts, Bill, folks? Thank you, Bill. I wanna move the item that I sponsored on the new business to the end because I have asked, keep it to one person. Senator Morgan, in case we have any to-dos from the state level, we can filter them to her. She's supposed to be here. So I wanna kinda move mine down to the bottom until she arrives. So if we could, under new business, I wanna take up for the second item there. Discuss, consider and act upon a bid award to Concrete Systems Incorporated of Hudson, New Hampshire for the fabrication and delivery of two precast concrete box culverts for the Palmer Circle Road reconstruction project in the amount of 18,300 with onsite delivery by September 3rd, 2015.
Thank you. July 27th, the town received two bid proposals for the fabrication and delivery of two precast concrete box culverts for the Palmer Circle project. The first one was from Shade Concrete Products, $20,560. The second, the low bid, was Concrete Systems Inc., $18,300. Tim Teft spoke with the officials at Concrete Systems Inc. just to ensure that they had the capacity for doing the job. They had an additional option for $10,000 that was not needed. They subsequently withdrawed that option and they really lowbited $18,300. The deadline for this is 30 days from today that they have to fabricate and deliver the box culverts to Palmer Circle.
Okay, any questions?
30 days from today?
30 days from today.
Okay, so it's not September 3rd, then? Does that, or not?
Actually, September 3rd.
September.
30 days in August. September 3rd.
Mr. Dennis Parente from Concrete Systems is here this evening in case the council had any questions.
Move that the Hopington Town Council approve a bid award to Concrete Systems Inc. Hudson, New Hampshire for the fabrication and delivery of two precast concrete box culverts in the amount of 18,300 with onsite delivery by September 3rd, 2015.
Second, anyone else want to make a second, any other discussion folks?
When do you think you'll be delivering it?
Well, our intent is to have some little drawings within a couple of days. So, I'd say by Wednesday of this week, we'll have some little drawings. Once those are approved, we'll go right into fabrication. It's a three-foot stand-by, two and a half for rise, it's fairly, you know, it's kinda compact and it's easy to fabricate. We'll set up two or three forms, but we'll try and do better, but with the amount of work out there, I think September 3rd would be a good guess and that we'll meet the contract requirements. Thank you.
Anyone else want to make a second, any other discussion folks? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, under new business is consider scheduling a public hearing to discuss and consider the adoption of a proposed non-smoking ordinance for town-owned fields and parks introduced and sponsored by me, council president, by default. This is one of the names that I threw in my hand.
I believe charter requires that one week advertisement, I believe. So, I believe I can get it into the paper for next Monday.
For the second meeting?
For the second meeting in August hearing. So if you wanna do as early as the 17th, it would be good. We could put it off until Tuesday, the 8th, which would be a scheduled meeting.
Well, the earlier, on the past news of the earlier date, does that, does that put you under some pressure?
I was gonna say, I'm gonna go for the first one in September also. It's up to you.
Well, that's all right, you can. I'm just gonna be away that day, that's fine.
I wouldn't mind doing it September, just give everybody a little more time so we're not jumping.
Doesn't matter to me.
I'm not on September 3rd, but that's okay, I don't have any here.
Well, September 8th will be your next scheduled council meeting, this Monday, the 7th is the first Monday.
Oh, is it?
And that's Labor Day, so the 8th will be-
Right, that's right, yes, that, I don't think I told you that.
Want to comment on this, Paul? Want to try to comment on this, Paul?
No, no.
That's a problem with the audience, that's for sure.
Well, when we bring it up and we have a hearing, then you can certainly weigh in. You gotta smoke, right?
Hey, I smoke my cigars. But, but, there's 50-feet situations, not good, it's not good. I mean, people walking along the street with 50 feet of property down there.
Oh, we're fair.
You know?
That's why we have the democratic process, right?
Right, not enforceable, that's my problem, it's not enforceable.
So you can let me know, August 17th or Tuesday, September 8th?
Why don't you do the August one?
On final, Paul. Okay. My friend, Lane Morgan, right out here, so.
Um, Larry, can you continue with poison commissions?
Yes.
I would like to consider reappointing Phil's police to the police commission. Second.
Okay, I'm absolutely fine with that, he's been there a while, I'm not sure how long.
A little time.
He's brought some stuff with him, I don't know, but.
He loves it, he enjoys what he does, it's good.
So, yeah, I'm in favor of supporting this, please, for another term? Okay?
Do you vote?
I believe you vote.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, first one's I go, okay? Any other discussion folks, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay. Yeah, we do the last public forum, anyone else have? Can you be third? All right? Maybe she'll walk in.
Yep.
Next on the new business-
All right, you're on.
Don't sit up.
Well, no, first thing is gonna come up first. Next on the new business, folks, the last item is tax assessor overview of how vehicle taxes are calculated on residents' tax bills sponsored by me. I get a few inquiries from residents, my neighbors mainly, about how the valuations are calculated. And I chatted with Chris, who's very helpful. I got some good insight on that. But I just figured for informational purposes, I wanted maybe Chris to, because you guys may get there. Now that the taxes seem to be going down every year, last three years we're getting calls on those car taxes now. So, it might be helpful that everyone really understand where these figures come from and for Chris out, I guess that we can't answer them ourselves. So, without further ado, Chris, motion?
So, I guess the easiest way to start this is motor vehicles, motor vehicles are taxed in accordance to the law. It's an excise tax on the plate. So, for the 2015 bill that went out in July for motor vehicles, it reflected any registrations from January 1st, 2014 through December 31st, 2014. And it does not reflect any current registrations in 2015. And that tends to be very confusing for people. Values are determined annually by the Vehicle Value Commission and use the clean retail value in the NADA cost guides. If the values are not identified by the VDC, the Vehicle Value Commission, then the tax assessor would place the value on, also using the NADA cost guides. I think the easiest way to explain this is just to go through an actual motor vehicle bill. So, when you look at the motor vehicle bill, it talks about, when you go down into the beef of it, it talks about the description, so you'll get the year, the name, the model, the registration and then your vehicle identification number.
Excuse me, can that door be closed? Do you still hear? Thank you.
So, in the next column, which will be the second column, is the full value. And the full value is the clean retail value that is placed on it by the Vehicle Value Commission, which is part of the law. Then it goes to days owned. Because they're looking at all the registrations from the previous year, they can actually say how many days you owned it and only pay your tax on those days owned for that vehicle on that, for that plate on that vehicle. So typically, people will have 365 there, that just means it was all year long. The next column will be prorated value. So your value will be prorated depending on how many days you had that vehicle or distributed that plate. The next one is personal exemptions. That's where you would see an exemption for, say, a veteran. And then we go to the state exemption, which is $500. The $500 is per each registration and it's also prorated. So if it wasn't registered for 365 days, the $500 will be prorated. The next column is hold harmless. And hold harmless always seems to be a question that we get. And this is a type of depreciation that is applied to passenger cars with plate type 1. The next column is taxable valuation. So when you take all of the other columns and subtract out an exemption or if they have a hold harmless, and then the state exemption, then you come down to your taxable value. And then the taxable value is applied to our tax rate for motor vehicles, which is locked. And that, that rate is 2118 per thousand. We realize that there are a lot of questions that come along with motor vehicle tax. You have 45 days to appeal any value. So if you disagree with the value, you can appeal it. So 45 days from when they were issued.
July 1st, I think, if this goes down.
So, basically this year, they can appeal up through September 9th. If it was a value from the Vehicle Value Commission, they would appeal right to the Vehicle Value Commission. And we have those forms in our office and we also have them online. If it was a value that was placed by our office, then the appeal would come right to us.
How do you know it's the Vehicle Value Commission or you? How does a taxpayer distinguish?
They would call and ask. When they're calling to question their value, we suggest that people call with any questions. If they think there might be a typo, it just doesn't seem right, call us. This is a busy time of year since there is only 45 days to appeal from when the bill is issued. If we are very busy, we always take down a name, account number, phone number and we say, we'll get back to you as soon as we can. Our turnaround time is usually within 24 hours.
Chris, is it safe to say that an older vehicle, maybe not in the first two or three years, evaluations are placed at from your office? Or is there like a general guideline, like newer vehicles are probably the Vehicle Valuation Commission versus the older ones are probably your office, is that a safe assumption?
Most times, it depends on if they're offered. Because the VDC has to use the NADA. If it's not offered in NADA, they won't apply it. So what we would do is we would use NSRP.
How do you think the 2118?
That is, it was locked in by the state, that was part of the general law. It was locked in on a certain year, I don't think I explained that well. So at a certain time, everybody's values were locked in throughout the state, not just Hopington, all towns. So, that, those rates are-
When I looked it up online, 2118, we are the 12th from the bottom of 39 cities and towns. So we're on the lower side of the taxable, however they did. I just don't know how they got the 2118, but at least we're on the, we're at number 12 from the bottom. So, that's certainly better than some of the ones I was looking up, up at 38, number 38, 39.
Right, right.
Sometimes you're third, and sometimes don't.
But if anybody has questions, if they feel that they, you know, the value was, you know, they just don't agree with the value, we always suggest to people to give us a call, shoot us an email, walk in, talk to us, we're happy to look it up in the book that is issued by the Vehicle Value Commission or I'll relook into the cost guides. Sometimes we have insufficient data, but that comes through.
So they can't come to you and say they have a car that almost got 500,000 miles on it? It's crazy, it's falling apart just because you think it's new or, you can't adjust that though. You can only look for mistakes and errors, is that what you're saying?
Exactly. No consideration can be given for mileage or condition.
Oh, okay.
Seems kinda crazy, doesn't it?
It is.
You're placing a value on something.
You couldn't.
And you're not, you're not basing on a condition at all. But when you go to sell it, you have to factor those things in.
I think it's hard to be subjective, you know, when you're supposed to be objective.
It would be, it would be, there would be a line down the road for us that we would have to all evaluate that.
Right. Chris, I have a question for you. As you know, the NADA book changes when you renew it every month, right? So, the price of a vehicle in January is not the price that you're gonna see in that same book for that same vehicle in the December book. So, who makes the decision which one of those prices? You know, a vehicle could drop $1,500 between value, value-wise, more, even more, between January 2014 and December 2014. Who makes the decision which place you're gonna, you're gonna put that vehicle at, what the value of that vehicle is?
It's, the value is at the end, you know, it's not the beginning of it.
So it's a December NADA book, that's where the value comes from, okay?
Yeah, and I think, Chris, you kinda touched upon the hold harmless because I asked her, if one of my neighbors, they cohabitate, they're not married. One gets the hold harmless depreciation, the other one has a commercial plate and he does not have to, it makes sense. But it's a 12-year depreciation schedule, so it actually lessens your tax for, based on year 6 to 18, right, Chris? I think that's what it says, it's a 12-year depreciation schedule.
There's a type of depreciation, so given the fact that there's a value that can be placed on it up through 25 years, after that, the value of the vehicle will be $500 for taxation purposes. So years 1 through 5, there is no hold harmless. It's 100% of the NADA value. Then years 6 through 17, there'll be some type of depreciation or something in that hold harmless for plate 1, okay? And then from year 18 through 25, it'll be at 100% of that NADA value. There will be no time or depreciation type applied to it.
So, not here flying the ornament here. So I've got, I don't have, I wish I had. So I've got a 1963 carpet convertible and I know it's worth $42,000. Now, how do you value something in that, if you know?
What year is it?
It's a 1962 carpet.
At the salary of $500?
$500.
It's 25 years old, I'm guessing.
Even though, even though, you know, everybody knows it's worth $43,000 because it's got a split window, you know?
Whatever.
All this convertible, 427 inch, you know, it's pristine condition, but it's, oh, I'm only getting taxed $500 on it.
Crazy, that is way too bad.
Giving it my salt right now.
I think this really got the objectivity, got the objectivity at the beginning and at the end.
Yeah.
Does the town, I'm sorry, does the town have the right to change the 500? In other words, is there enabled legislation and we can decide that we wanted to forgive the first $1,000?
It's a state reimbursement of 500, so if you wanted to have a larger exemption, it would be kicked in by the town.
Yeah, right.
So I guess, you know, my question, when I chatted with Chris, you know, I take my car on my truck, for instance, it's an old Ford Suburban- my car, my truck, for instance, it's an old Ford Suburban, I guess I'd ask Chris, you know, can I go to a centralized site and back into that value? And I guess the answer was, it's not so easy to do, I guess.
I guess the centralized site would be called the Tax Assessor's Office, and let us just, let us explain where we're from and let us make sure that there's no errors.
So, yeah, so I guess we'll have to, my neighbors will have to refer that to you and help them, because like I said, one's an accountant, I think, by the way.
We're very used to getting questions this time of year. And to answer your question about the older vehicles, a lot of people talk about that, it's, and there's a lot of different opinions on it, but typically, when somebody has a valuable older vehicle like that, they don't go on the road at all, right?
That's right.
So there isn't as much wear and tear on the roads and it's more of a...
I know a lot, I know a lot of those people have insurance, it recovers them for weekends, a certain number of miles every year, and they have to be going to auto shows or something like that, obviously, so, yeah, you're right.
No, it's just, you know, we've discussed it, you know, taxes, taxes, that much.
Because a lot of those vehicles are wheel, a lot of them, and it's a shame that we don't tax them accordingly, but it's...
No, I think it is fair the way it is. I think it's fair the way it is with an older vehicle. Most people, their vehicles aren't worth forty-two, if they have an old vehicle, it might be worth eight thousand or less.
Oh, yeah.
And it's a lot of vehicles, it's a lot of work and they barely hardly ever try to.
The purpose of motor vehicle taxes is for the roads, it's for the infrastructure.
Right.
And if you're not driving anywhere, you know, then you're not using the roads, you're not...
You don't, because it's also not being used, you're right.
You just really aren't. So I think it's fair, I mean, it may be an objective thing, but I think that's wrong to be fair. Because the purpose is the roads, not the vehicles.
That's right.
So, Chris, would it be safe to say, I guess, if you want to be somewhat independent in this, if you get an NADA recent book, you can somewhat come up close to, or if you're not taking mileage and condition into factor, can you come up with something close, you think?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So the books are what, five bucks or whatever?
You can go online.
Oh, you can go online?
But online, it'll be today's value and it wouldn't be December or January value.
What does NADA stand for?
National Automobile Distributors Association, I believe.
Your association?
Yeah, I think...
You gather, like, Washington Trust, I think, but you're a...
Oh, okay, all right. All right, so I'll relay that, and I have other questions for Christine. Okay, great, thanks, Christine, I appreciate it. I had asked Elaine Morgan to come and see if she could shed any light from the state level on this process. You've heard from Christine, seems like, you know, any value issues, we'll just refer them to her office. I guess maybe Elaine, you can shed some light from the state level as to what your take is on this matter.
Thank you, President Lindofey. Well, I mean, hello, everyone. And I made a few phone calls today just to verify everything Chris had stated was correct. The only, you know, the car's value on the clean retail value, period. Like, my husband, for example, we had, his lease was over and he decided, we decided to buy the lease out. Well, he had almost a hundred thousand miles on his car, it's two years old, and it's taxed at the full rate. So, you know, it's not fair. Massachusetts does the MSRP value, and then they, they give, I think they subtract anywhere from twenty-five dollars to a thousand on the newer vehicles. Connecticut, they do, they only do seventy percent of the car's retail value. So I think the state needs to look at this, and the only thing you can do is dispute it, you have to write the letter within forty-five days. I mean, if you're one day late, I mean, you're done, if you change addresses, any kind of reason, they won't even accept it. But, and then it's up to our tax assessor to assess the value when we do get the letter. I guess they let our tax assessor do, do they let you assess it afterward after the forty-five-day letter? I'm not sure. If it still has to go to the VBC guide, probably, they would probably go more with the, with the Blue Book value, maybe? But they, they said it's, there's no, no kind of discount, no matter how many, I mean, it could be a five-year-old car with two hundred thousand miles on it, three, I mean, just like you said, it's taxed at the same rate, it doesn't matter what kind of condition if it's banged up.
I think that's where most of the disconnect is with the taxpayers, because even for me, I mean, it seems illogical to not factor in mileage and condition, for me, anyway, but...
Absolutely, I think it's very unfair.
You sell it, you sell it, you factor it in, when you buy a car.
Right, you couldn't sell it at that rate.
So, but the clean retail value really sheds some light on what they look at, which is really pretty amazing.
You know, and at the same time, if you're going to do a hundred thousand miles and you've really used the roads and they might check the taxes up.
What if you used it all out of state, suppose you have to commute to Maine, you know, not using these roads, but...
Right, but it's using roads. And so probably if they tried doing it on mileage, then they would jack the prices up because you're really, it's called homage on the road. So it'll be interesting to see how they can address this.
Yeah, I think, I think the methodology has to change somehow to relate to, other than having, no one knows you can, Frankie, when I told you today, you had forty-five days to appeal it. You didn't know, nobody, I mean, you don't know that as the general taxpayer, so...
We're all involved in this mess, so we can't intend to know what's going on, but the average person who is not involved is literally doesn't know.
Right.
And I try calling, you know, VBC, whoever they are.
Yeah, I'll try.
Good luck.
Yeah, so that's basically what I got, and they told me statistics, but, you know, Mass has a higher, we shouldn't compare to other states that are like us, say, like Maine or Vermont, or that are more on the tax bracket than we are. I mean, we're high, we're extremely high, we're high in Connecticut, Mass.
You know, at one point, they were talking about eliminating this, but I guess that kind of felt like what you said.
We needed money, that's what happened. I mean, I...
There was an idea that floated around that we're about raising the gasoline tax a penny or two to offset this revenue, maybe...
How about lower spending?
Oh, that's a good idea. That's hard to do in state government.
Well, it's hard to do when the bridges are falling apart. So there's a lot of things that are wrong with the state that you cut, you cut costs and then you just go further into a hole. So it's, it's a tough balance, as you know. And you know, just like us next time, you have to deal with electric, because the electric...
That is, tell you, okay, the up for the electric company, I mean, they're profiting, they're operating. Well, I thank you for having me.
Appreciate it, sir.
I have to pick up my son, so...
Good, yeah, thank you very much, thank you, Chris, you're very sweet, appreciate it. Oh, Chris, please.